Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for coming out to our 3:00 PM meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present except Councilmember Kendrick. We will have the invocation and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Alvarez. Would you please all stand? Mr. Jones, Mr. Edmund Jones, would you do prayer, please, sir? Thank you.
As we come together in unity, love, joy, and happiness, clearing all minds and hearts, Most gracious eternal Father, we pause and say thank you for another day's journey. Oh God, we ask you right now for your merciful and blessing. We ask you, oh God, to go up and down this chamber right now, touch each and every one on the sound of my voice. Oh God, we ask you to give them wisdom, understanding, character, and love and kindness, God. Then, God, we thank you for last night as we slumbered and slept, you watched over us all night. Then, early this morning, as we peeped over the balcony of heaven, you smiled on us like it was a rise to a brand-new day that wasn't promised to us. We thank you, Father. God, we ask you to touch us right down the mighty way, God. God, we ask you peace, your love, and joy, and happiness. Then, God, we realize, Father, that someone landed on the bed of friction tonight. Touch them right now, God. Be with our service to men and women, some as they stand in arms' way as we stand here enjoying all the fruits of life, God. Then, God, we ask you to continue to order our footsteps and regulate our minds. And, oh God, we ask you, God, as we go forward from this day, God, keep us under your protective care. And we say thank you, God. Thank you for being so kind and merciful to us and answered our prayers. Since we ask your holy and righteous name, amen, amen, amen.
The United States of America and Jewish community, which is standing on a mission to guide, be visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones and Councilmember Alvarez. I would like to apologize for the chamber being so hot. Our AC is out. This is an old building, and it's taken a minute to fix it. And you can only imagine what our staff have to go through, especially this week. The weather will be up to 98 degrees, and they have to work within this facility. But for the ones that are here, we truly apologize. We're doing the best that we can. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Madam, I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayor Protem Adams.
Madam Mayor, I second.
And one of the things before we approve the agenda, I forgot to tell you. I was trying to pull an item, and I was not looking at it. RS-25-124, that item, staff has told me, Councilwoman Gonzalez, if you can call back your motion, and Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Adams, if you can call back yours.
Madam, I rescind my request for approval.
So could you add to pool from the agenda RS-25-124?
I move to approve the agenda, removing RS-25-124.
I second.
And that's RS-25-124?
Correct.
All in favor? Yes. All opposed? No. Motion carries six to zero. We're going to go into our presentations. Madam Secretary 1, 2, and 3, can you read them back-to-back? So I just, okay? All right, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. PR 25017, Student Occupation Awareness and Recognition Program Certificate
Once again, good afternoon, everyone. It's an honor and pleasure to stand before you as we get ready to recognize some amazing students that have gone beyond to prepare themselves for the future. As you know, they're not today our future, but they start right now. Learning those skill sets will help them as they graduate from high school, go off to college, and decide on that career path. With that being said, the City of Colleen has an excellent working relationship with Texas workforce, and I will have Mrs. Hersher Berger to come up and go into more details with the program, and then we'll have the students to come up and receive certificates.
Good afternoon. Yes, so these students went through a week-long training of workshops teaching them how to go through interview skills. They practiced resume writing, editing. They practiced personal skills of handshakes and how to present yourself with, you know, just proper employability skills, communication, all that kind of stuff. And whenever they took their quizzes, we did a lot of activities. They passed their quizzes. They passed any type of activities we had them do. They are just, they excelled, and we feel like they, all of us came away with a lot of new knowledge.
Great. All right, the students, will all the recipients come up?
All my students come up.
All the students, will you come up? Okay, we're going to come back here.
Okay.
Right here, I'm going to move that to the side.
That's okay.
So do you have them in the... Y'all can get in line here, make a circle, over circle.
Sorry.
Come around here, baby. Yeah, come right here. Come up, this is right here. You can call after nine.
All right. Ms. Jamela?
So what they are...
Sorry.
They're also receiving from me, a city of Colleen, and this is their certificate. I know, isn't that kind? And this is the whole council.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so I'll have them go up there, yeah.
Stay right there. No, just stay, yeah. Yeah, there you go. Okay. Ms. Jaria?
Ms. Saronia? Did I say it right? Did I butcher it? Zariana.
Sorry, Zariana, sorry.
Mr. Junior? Mr. Octavian? Mr. Thomas? Mr. Ishmael? Oh, there you go. All right, did I get, is everybody else here? Did I miss anybody? They all got one?
That's cool, that they're all at once. All right, okay, so we got everybody here.
Okay, I'll show you.
Okay, so council, would you please stand at the table and stand in the back. Breath, that's when you come in and we take over.
Okay, as they're leaving the room, as you can tell, some people are really having trouble with this heat. So we're going to move this agenda as quick as we can, but we have to be in detail about what's going on, and I want the council to know what they're voting on and why they're voting. So we're going to try to move this agenda as fast as we can. And with the presenters, please stay on time. And we might be taking a couple of breaks more often than normal. Madam Secretary, whenever you're in.
PR 25018, Colleen Cooperative Grocery Store Interest Survey.
Good afternoon, sir. As you know, we're struggling with heat, and Mr. Kegel just brought to my attention that you also have a video. And what we're trying to limit all speakers to five minutes.
Okay.
So you take whichever route you want to go, whichever way you want to go if you're five minutes. So good afternoon.
Is there a timer somewhere? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Foliuman Brown, and Leon Birch is in the audience with me for Community Hands of Central Texas. And we want to extend our sincere appreciation to the mayor and her staff for hosting our online food cooperative survey. It was very important that we got that information in terms of what people were thinking. There were a total of 188 respondents. That's anecdotal, given the population of Colleen. However, it did provide some insight in terms of how we can move forward. The cooperative grocery store is quite different from the traditional store because it's people-centered, people valued over profit. And of course, there's lots of information about food cooperatives, so we won't spend a whole lot of time telling you what it is because the presentation is in front of you, it kind of goes over what it's all about. But the key difference is it's the people. The people own it. They have a vested interest in it. And what we have been doing is conducting interest meetings to see if there are enough people who are interested and actually to become a part of the food cooperative. What's interesting about the slides and information, out of the 188 respondents, a total of about 36 said they would be interested in participating in the leadership and the development of the food cooperative. And so that's a very small number. And again, it's very, and that tracks in terms of how things are with, in the community, small people, not small people, small numbers usually end up doing most of the work. But I think we need to, here are the two asks that we have related to the food cooperative and moving forward. So, one, we want people to consider how they define the word neighbor. And we also want them to look at, because there is a parable called a Good Samaritan, and in it, it defines what a neighbor is. And in that parable, there were some folks that were super busy with their routines. They did not have time to stop and ask help for, or give help, or give assistance to someone who needed it. And so the second one is, consider the definition of, your definition of neighbor. The second one was, the Samaritan had stopped. And Dr. King really captured this in his speech because he said that, "If I had not stopped, what would have happened to the person?" So we are inviting people to interrupt their busy schedules and to be a part of a process that can be, that's very transformational for the city and can provide some really tangible results in the sense of creating an opportunity for individuals to work with different individuals throughout the city to achieve a common goal, and that is a food cooperative, that it will not only provide resources or be beneficial to North Colleen, but the entire city of Colleen. So what would, what would happen if we did not stop? If we did not pause, what would happen to those residents in the food desert? And I think we need to consider that, given the time span that it has been in such a state and such a category as it is now. How am I doing on time?
One minute.
One minute left. So we want to continue conducting meetings, and we also want to continue to ask the city support for food cooperative in terms of technical advice, meeting spaces, and also, again, using the platforms that we have. Let me, let me back up just a minute. One of the things that we've learned, there's a tension. The food cooperative has very strategic developmental foundational things that must take place to ensure the viability and sustainability of a co-op. That is, has created tension in the sense of somebody, everybody wants it right now. It doesn't happen right now. But there's a, there's a fundamental process that's used based on a model that has been used throughout these United States to start cooperatives that we are adhering to. And one of the, the first thing we do is to determine how many interested people, if you're ready to go, be interested to be a part of that, then we can move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I guess my question, what is your ask? I have, we know that, thank Councilwoman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Cobb, and others that brought this to our attention, and thank you for meeting with me and Mr. Kegel. What is there other than space and to continue to put it out to the public about the meetings? I like where you stated, this is not going to happen overnight. That's the reality of it. And the other thing, I like what you stated, it's a community effort.
Right.
It's a buy-in. So anything else of that?
I'm so glad you introduced, you asked that, because what is interesting is what happened, what is happening in Dale Valley, just south of us in Austin. There's, there is a food desert there. And the city of Austin actually funded a co-op. They were actually using a mill van, one of those big, I call it a mill van, small van, to operate out of now. And they have acquired like 60, maybe 60,000 supporters. And as you know, HEB, they has an algorithm that they use to determine placement. And the other part of that is, that's why I mentioned about reconsider the word neighbor. If we don't stop and pause what's going to happen, to relook at how we view our neighbors in spaces that are not like the spaces that we are in.
Yes, sir.
And also, here it is. This food cooperative can create foot traffic. It could be the hub, the anchor of a downtown revitalization, given the vast flexibility that a food cooperative has in terms of not only just groceries, but also programs to meet specific needs of the community, education, resources, again, a hub, a portal, if you will, in terms of providing those resources. And this is the transformational part of it, but it can't be any transformational, it can't be any transformation if we don't change how we frame and view our understanding of neighbor to us.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, if you can bring us, because we do have another presentation on the 19th.
Oh.
Yes, sir. It's, yes, sir. So if you can bring that Austin information back to us, and I'm really sorry about the time, if you could just email us how Austin is doing it there with their food truck, I'm assuming their co-op truck. But you have questions for Councilwoman, and I just, I just want to give up the mic to them on that time. Councilwoman Gonzalez, and then Councilmember Segarra has a question for you. Ma'am, the floor is yours.
Thank you, madam. Thank you for that presentation, sir. During our, the town halls that we hosted and the community interest meetings, there was quite a bit of interest from some local partners, whether they were garden growers or people that were delivering vegetables and such. And so there was a request for additional town halls. I'm glad to hear that, say that you're going to continue exploring that because there are some other people that have been made aware of a cooperative opportunity that are extremely excited about having this conversation and going a little bit further to understand it. So for people that are listening today that may not have had a chance to attend the meeting, really quickly, there was a reference that you had for a website for information on co-ops. Do you have that handy, sir, that you can read it aloud for our viewers?
It's on a Facebook page, Food Cooperative, link Food Cooperative Facebook page.
The Facebook.
All the information is on there. The Dale Valley information is on there. The actual how-to start a food co-op, that information is on there. There's different resources from other food co-ops, and their journey is on there as well. So that's, yeah, that's available.
So our constituents can get information on Facebook.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for coming up here and speak. You mentioned that there's, what was it, a mill van or something in Austin?
Dale Valley.
In Dale Valley?
Yeah.
What kind of, what kind of items did they have there, do you know?
Can't speak to it. They have operating hours that they have, but the details of it is on the Facebook page.
Got it, got it. Yeah, because I've heard that, you know, we brought, people before brought that idea up, that maybe we can have like a, some kind of tent, some kind of trailer, some kind of... And I asked before, and I said, "What kind of items would they need?" They said, "Well, essentials," you know, whether it's meat, vegetables. And then my response to that is, I said, "We already have that. There's a store down there on Second Street that has fruits, vegetables." I mean, there's a, and I don't know, you know, it always kind of gets me to think, you know, what kind of food desert we are when there is a store down there that has, and I go down there on weekends, it's pretty busy, that has more than the essentials. And so I just want to point it out, because a lot of times, you know, we say food desert, but I think the picture that most people have in mind is like bringing an HEB or a Super Walmart or something like that. But that is already there in our downtown area. I think that for most people, you know, the heart is in the right place, and so I commend you for doing that. But at the end, as I may mention many, many, many times, at the end, when it comes down to it, is it's a business, and a business has to do what? More than anything else. They have to make money. And in order for them to make money, they need that traffic. They need the consumer, the shopper. And for something to work in that place, we got to pull shoppers from other areas, whether it's to south of Colleen, bring them there so they can shop. And when they got a grocery store over there, it's kind of, it's a challenge for us as a city, it's a challenge for everybody. But I just want to make mention, as people think about this, I think the main thing, you can have the most beautiful grocery store out there, but the main thing you need above anything else is that, that foot traffic. Otherwise, you know, the reason that HEB pulled out was because they were losing like 40,000 a month. And they are a multi-billion dollar company that can afford to do that. And so, but thank you. I appreciate it. And I appreciate, like I said, your heart's in the right place.
One other thing, I'm so sorry.
Yes, sir. I always wanted to say one thing. The grocery store that we have been presented in, in the past, you're 100%, it functioned like that. And what I was going to say, if the council can take the time and go and look at... I can hear you, I'm talking. If they can go to the website and pull this up and see how it functioned, I think that's what you were trying to convey over. But I'm going to get Councilwoman Cobb, and I give you your closing comment, because we do have to keep this agenda moving.
It's not, it's, it's important that we have a grocery store, but something that's really important, because we've heard the comments of Councilman Segarra with the cost and the loss, but is it economical for the persons and the persons that are going to the grocery store, or that would go to your cooperative grocery store? Bananas won't be $2 a pound when they're regular 79 cent a pound. How, what, what is the price? We have to look at those prices. That's going to be very important, because we can have all of this stuff in place, and if I can't afford it, I'm not going to go. I'm going to go where the bananas are 29 cent a pound. So that's, that's really big. No one ever talks about, "How much are these groceries going to cost?" It's just so important.
And I think that goes back to, if you look at the video, it does not, this does not work as a regular grocery store.
Right.
The people within our community, they bring vegetable stuff. It helps not only the people that invest in this co-op grocery, but it also helps the farmers and the people that grow these items. And that goes back to Councilwoman Gonzalez. I wasn't at the meeting, I heard they were great. My schedule just packed. And people, the garden, the creators, I think that's the name of them, they want to buy into it because that's what they do. They plant gardens in the neighborhood. Councilmember Alvarez had mentioned also working with Park and Rec, Mr. Murphy and them, and it started out putting gardens in neighborhoods, and that's where they get these items. But it's a neighborhood buy-in, and I'm going to give him his last close words. But I agree with you, Councilwoman Cobb, if you can't afford it, yeah, it goes back to Councilmember Segarra, then the business won't sustain.
Because I just bought a watermelon for $3.
Oh, God. Well, you need to stop shopping now.
But it was the person who was growing them here, and you wanted to help this person who had this garden. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I don't know where that's at.
Okay.
Sir, you have your final say.
The wonderful thing about the co-op in terms of its development is this flexibility in meeting the needs of the community in relationship to pricing and all of those things. So there's lots of flexibility in there. There's also the potential, they've already agreed to the small ranches and farmers as pipeline. They have Gardens and Temple and all of those things, and accessing the local resources for those who are gardeners to provide resources in that space. The other part that is really, that's really significant is, when people are vested in a project and they're working in it, there's a level of responsibility and ownership that's quite different from something else. there's a level of responsibility and ownership that's quite different from, uh, something else. So, uh, research says when folks own stuff, they're less likely to, uh, be destructive in that application. And so, in terms of that, there's this whole notion, again, revisiting how we view, uh, view a neighbor. And also, if we don't stop our busy routine to, uh, attend to the needs of our neighbors, what will happen to them? So we look forward to, um, additional meetings in terms of exploring this. I think the, the timing is, is, is right, and it does provide us a unique, it provides a unique niche for the city of Colleen, given the complexities of the big box stores and all of those things. So again, closing, food cooperative is about people, not profit. Although it is a business oriented and it is fiscally responsible, but people first, profit second. And even the, there's investment that comes from the shares, which will be determined, the cost of shares will be determined by the group in, in the formation of that. So lots of flexibility. And again, we appreciate the time to be in your presence in this space to talk about this wonderful opportunity, and, uh, look forward to, um, follow-up.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Wilson, Mr. Kegel, and I, and Gonzo, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez, we will continue to meet, uh, like I stated to you, we have another presentation. So, uh, next, the week after next, about grocery stores. And to, uh, to me, I can't speak for the council, it's really what's cost-effective with this budget. But thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
PH 25019, Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce Grocery Store Agreement.
Good afternoon, sir, you have five minutes. Ma'am, good afternoon, sorry about that, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor Nash King. And to the council, I'm Dr. Sanjannat Crossley, and I'm here with the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce to say that we're proposing a comprehensive twenty-four month initiative to address the food desert concerning, concerns through a professional services agreement for economic development consultation to procure a grocery store with strategic grocery store recruitment and development in the North Colleen food desert that we know exists. And that's our proposal. We're showing a picture of our board, because there are a variety of professionals involved with this incentive that we're compassionate about and expect that it will make a difference in Colleen.
All right. The IBCC Experience is an ecosystem that supports organizations equal access business, workforce, and economic development. With our excellent service, IBCC has championed and influenced over nineteen percent of the businesses in the downtown area. So as we empower underserved entrepreneurs, we offer strategic outreach and training in cutting-edge tools such as AI.
This proposal follows best practice established, uh, by the Texas Economic Development Council. And of course, all terms in this presentation, uh, is subject to negotiation. Our... With the community profile, uh, we noticed that there was a, of course, an increase of one point nine, one point nine percent of job growth rate, uh, which is, of course, consistent with the, uh, population growth largely driven with migration. However, uh, this area suffers from the grocery store retail leakage, which we all already know, where the large portion of the grocery spending happens, not just outside of North Colleen, but it also happens outside the city. And I think we all shop that way. Whether you go to HEB and Harker Heist, and you come to Walmart or what have you, we all, um, do that, uh, as well. And as you can see right here, here's our EPIE model. This cyclic process that involves engaging stakeholders, crafting a strategic plan, implementing the plan, continuously evaluating its effectiveness. And this, uh, EPIE model is designed for long-term impact and not just a quick fix. Uh, with our, our unique recruitment strategy, we'll definitely approach the stand, uh, stands apart by using data-driven insights, target groceries whose whole, uh, business model that would definitely be in line with the city's needs. It is also, uh, future site-specific analysts to customize incentive recommendations as well as to document, uh, the community support, uh, as we demonstrate the local demand. And with our proactive marketing, uh, we would definitely identify a polit, policy strategies for council approval, uh, as we engage in a comprehensive outreach campaign. This includes a sponsored marketing trip to Colleen, which involves, uh, contracting senior, uh, grocery executives, organizing site visits, as well as conducting a letter sending campaign. And here we have, uh, some of our key deliverables. This project will produce not just a market analysis report, but a recruitment strategy, the community, community engagement, uh, reports and categories and public feedback. And our final delivery, of course, uh, will be a very comprehensive final report, which will integrate previous documents, uh, which include recommendations and future actions. And with our post-overview timeline, of course, uh, this will be a twenty-four month project, which will structure in our four-phase approach, with the initiate contract lasting at least twelve months in this phase. And the financial structure. So, of course, uh, here we are today with the base, uh, cost, which comes from the motion and the second that was right here, uh, in City Council in July. The city of Colleen is not a business, um, op, is not in business to open a grocery store, but with the clean economic development, uh, as well as the city of Colleen, and IBCC can partner to create an attractive incentive package. Uh, the IBCC has also pledged to raise and match the fifty thousand that's put towards this, because it's not just the city's responsibility, it's the community's responsibility as well. Um, and we'll match that in value, as well as request to, that IBCC be earmarked for FY twenty-six, as well as FY twenty-seven, as we associate, uh, the expenses and subject to the city approval. And we definitely would love to average, uh, have a setup meeting after this to convert these slides into, uh, an agreeable contract. And at this time, this concludes my brief, subject to your questions.
Thank you. Do you have any grocery stores in mind that we haven't already, we already been down this road? My question is, do we have any new grocery stores other than Oklahoma that we'll be considering, uh, coming to Colleen?
A hundred percent, yes, ma'am.
So, right, okay, I guess my, maybe I'm saying it wrong. My question to you, you can take this fifty thousand dollars and guarantee a forty-nine, whatever it was, and a grocery store will be coming to Colleen.
I can call the grocery right now.
And they will, we don't have to put up any more money? They just, they prepare to come here and set up?
I have a developer as well as a grocery store.
I'm, I'm listening.
That's it? Yes, ma'am.
So you have a developer?
Mm-hmm.
And you have a grocery store that's willing to come to Colleen? And just the money that you're requesting now, the city of Colleen do not have to put up any more funding for this grocery store to come to Colleen?
Now, let me be clear.
Please do.
Of course, we're going into, IBCC is being the consultant, doing the outreach and bringing the grocery store to the city, aligning with KDC as well as the city incentives, uh, to bring them here. Now, there is no grocery store that I know of that will build a grocery store for the forty-nine. Now, this is the, uh, consulting or professional service agreement between an organization and, as you would partner with anybody else with professional services.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, there's a grocery store that is considering coming to Colleen?
Correct.
And this grocery store that's considering coming to Colleen, why they just don't come? Why, I don't understand. If, if they wanna work with us, why they just won't work with Colleen? Why do they need a middle person if they want to have a grocery store in Colleen?
I would say if that's the case...
Melissa Brown for interrupting me while I was speaking, that was your first warning. Sir, I apologize for the rudeness, continue.
I would say, one, stuff like that is based on relationships. You know, it doesn't matter who you send, but if the person that is there communicating and they understand the message and the delivery, it's, it's relationship building. Because if, if this was as important as it was in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, this spurred just because the organization, as you see to your front, wanted to bring something, began to be active in doing it, but there was no public-private partnership that was established the reg, the other two or three times that we came up here about the same situation.
So it's the same grocery store?
Not at all.
Okay. Councilwoman Sagara, Councilwoman, uh, Councilmember Sagara, Councilwoman Gonzalez, and then Councilmember Solomon and Councilwoman Cobb.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, you guys. I know that you guys are always, um, trying to make an impact, and you guys have taken this issue on head-on, so I commend you for that, because, um, you guys are working hard to try to help the city get a grocery store there on our downtown area. I got a little bit confused there.
North Colleen.
North, North Colleen, I'm sorry. But I got it confused, cause following the mayor's comment, you know, you kinda mentioned you got somebody already. And when you said that, my question was, okay, then, why are we doing research and all that? To, you know, go out there and do visits and stuff, uh, if you already have somebody that you can just call and pick up and, and have them come and start building? And then the second part, here's, here's my thing, and this is the biggest thing, cause I understand this, uh, pretty well, because, you know, I, I, I met with HEB, we met with Walmart, they do, they got massive researches. And they can bring in the most beautiful grocery store that you can build out there in our north part of Colleen, but that's not the issue. So, I don't know if your focus is on the grocery store, or the focus is on the market. And that's where they say the problem is, it has nothing to do with the grocery store. It has to do with the market. And Colleen, North Colleen has been, you know, built out for many years. You know, we know there's a lot of older homes there, so there hasn't been a lot of building in North Colleen for many years, so it's kinda been blocked in. And as you mentioned, you know, leakage, leakage follows the rooftops. And that's how come they've moved south, because that's where the consumer is, and they need all those consumers in order to keep them, not even, I wouldn't even say profitable, they're not, they're just looking to break even. You know, you gotta pay employees, you gotta pay for the merchandise and stuff like that. So, I, that, that, that's my second question is, is, you know, are you focusing on the grocery store, trying to figure out the market? Because I can pretty much guarantee, if they are a good grocery store, they're gonna wanna know that, they're gonna want, how are we gonna make profit? You know, are we gonna be losing forty thousand dollars like HEB, who had a building paid off, so there was no expense there? And it was, it was just cause they just didn't have enough traffic. Thank you.
And what was the first question, sir?
Yes, please.
Oh, the first question is about the, you said you needed the money to do like research, but then you said you already had somebody. So my question was, why do you need the money to go out there if you already have somebody?
Well, that would be not putting all your eggs in one basket. You know, the same way as we got the first one, we would then go more into, where we got this first one? Well, let's go back. For some of you that don't know, um, we brought three grocery stores already into the city. The individuals that came was on the original site visit, so it's not like this is something that we cannot do. There are members on the dice right now that was a part of the very first site visit with a grocery store that we brought into the city. The only reason why that grocery store said that they were not interested in coming was because of the roads was too narrow when you're talking about the logistical piece. And they didn't have the, um, the logistic partnership. So what I did then was, I leaned forward, I went out to McLean and found them a distribution hub where they can get, they had thirty thousand in SKU that they needed to fulfill those shelves. Already had, uh, those were like the, um, the beverage companies' distribution hubs that are out there in Temple, so I did that for the second person. So again, it's roads. And now that the CIP has already been approved, that request is already in, uh, the design of widening the roads. So, just by default, it is now, wouldn't be an issue. So, I mean, we pretty much lined this all out. And the second question that you communicated about, um, it's not just a grocery store. We know it's not just a grocery store. And from your field of expertise, it's not just a grocery store, whether it's your friend down here at Second, on Second, or it's anybody else, it's mixed-use. We have to look at mixed-use, because now you're developing that ecosystem in that particular place that where they shop, live, and play. So we're not just, just focusing on a grocery store. We have to be in the phase one approach, bringing that and then anchoring with other things that is going to increase the survivability rate of the grocery store.
And also, uh, to piggyback on Councilwoman Sagara, even what you said about the CIP, well, you know, with Ransier, it's gonna be a minute before we start working on that project. So whoever come in, if the roadway was a problem then, and we're not gonna be able to really focus on Ransier because of funding, then it's still gonna take a while for them to bring the grocery store, because the roadway won't be up to the standards that they would like in order to bring in the trucks. So that's just food for thought on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, madam. Um, I will be forever grateful for the work that IBCC has done since my first term on council. You guys jumped right in and really went to work, to your point that you just made there, as far as bringing folks in and, and really trying to help us solve this, this problem. But realistically, though, I do have some questions. And so, one of the things and one of the challenges that we face, we have done feasibility studies through other organizations. There was a financial feasibility that was done, construction feasibility. But then, we've also put out RFPs for those, um, mixed-use type projects. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kegel or Madam Mayor, but I don't believe that we had a return on that. We had to submit a second RFP, um, for grocery, uh, or for build-out, right? For, um, an anchor opportunity for groceries, is that correct?
Well, Mr. Russell, I, you, we all been working on this for a while, and no one wanted to, uh, be involved with that. You were part of that conversation. So anything that has been around grocery stores, Mr. Russell, you, Mr. Kegel, and I, we've all been in these same conversations. So whatever you're saying, we all know that.
I'm just restating for the public, cause it's been a lot.
That is good.
There's been a lot going on. And so if we're talking about a twenty-four month window, I guess my question is, what will we do differently, or what can we do differently that we have not already done? Also, with the knowledge, because the question has been posed to me with the fact that most groceries have their own, um, uh, real estate departments that go out and seek locations. And so if they're not seeking us, what are we gonna do differently to attract them? So what, what do we expect to do differently in that twenty-four months that we haven't already done over the last four years?
Well, I would say definitely going into a true, uh, partnership, cause right now, we just having conversations. Like, how long are we gonna continue to have conversations? Are we really, really gonna get down to the business of it? With those RFPs that was pushed out, um, I can definitely say, one, we have to open a solicitation with the, uh, professional services. There's no solicitation for professional services. Whether it's myself, uh, coming up here, or it's, um, Mr. Brown coming up here, or the gentleman that's coming down from Dallas. Without a solicitation, we're just up here talking. So we have to start from the solicitation part, when you're dealing with the consultation or the professional service in bringing this grocery store in. Now, when you're going from the RFP perspective, one, the RFP is gonna have to be, uh, reopened, cause I know at the time, the original conversation, we were talking about the money that was gonna be on the table and how much it was gonna cost to bring a grocery store. Right now, it's post-terrorist. So all of those numbers that we were talking about in twenty twenty-three, now, post-terrorist, we're gonna have to have a different conversation or figure out, what is it gonna be? Whether we're using a, um, was it chapter three eighty, three eighty-one, one of those two? And those other incentives, like, we're gonna have to come back to the table, see what the number is, uh, and what's changed. And now, I'm, I'm open to re-engaging, uh, but just show some reciprocity, as well as the work that we've already done. Now, it's, it's not hard to do. But when we come up here, it just seem like it's making it hard for us to, uh...
Thank you, I wanna be abundantly clear, I appreciate your statement there, but city of Colleen is not the grocer.
Correct.
Right? So the conversation to be had with us is not quite yet. We're kind of out of, out of order in a sense, but the retail provider would be the, or the grocer would be the person that, or the company or the entity that those conversations would be happening with, happening with. And then ultimately, the city of Colleen, when it's time to discuss abatements or incentives or things like that. So without having a conversation first with a retail provider or grocer, there's... there's really not a whole lot that we can do up here because we are not the provider. So we just want to make sure, and I know I'm speaking for myself at this point, excuse me. I just want to make sure that, just in full transparency, that we're actually having this conversation, that what are we going to do differently? Because that was asked to me. If we've already been doing this for the last four years and we're now saying another 24 months, what are we going to do differently? How can we make this work, if we can make this work? And what does that look like? So thank you for your answer.
I would say let's start with the LOI. If the City of Colleen is very interested and like they say they're interested, let's sign the LOI and a non-disclosure agreement, and then we can go from there.
Councilwoman Cobb.
I think the question is, if we give you $49,999. Will we see some groceries coming in in one month? If you have a grocery store? And then my second question is, will Reverend Brown and IBCC, we're better together. It's good to work together. If you got some folks that's going to bring some food and you got a place where we can put it, why can't we go and get that building, put that food in there and sell it? Very elementary, I am. I don't try to use fancy words or anything. I'm very elementary. You got a spot, you got some people, put some groceries in there and sell it. What's, I'm trying to figure out, what's all this in-between stuff?
That's for me.
Yes, please.
I would say when you look at a cooperative, that's where we started. The very first field trip, I would say, or site visit, was to go to Jubilee. Like, I've been at that stage. That's 2023.
Okay, let's stop right there.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're at the stage where you were with cooperative at that point.
Correct.
Reverend Brown just came in today and he started talking about cooperative.
Correct.
I think that we need to get together here. It's really easy. If you got the people that's got the stuff to go in the place and you got the place, what we do, we put it together, we work together. I think this is just going to be such a difficult task. Just, I can raise sweet potatoes and bring you some sweet potatoes over to the store, but I may not have enough sweet potatoes to meet the quota that you will need. But if he asks the person, and you all can do this, let's work together. How come we cannot work together? That may be a very elementary question.
There's more layers to that.
Okay.
Councilmember, are you finished, ma'am?
Yes, he said, let me just hear the answer.
Yeah. There's more layers to that because when we did the site visit, we went up there to Jubilee. For those that don't know, go up to Jubilee in East Waco. That is a cooperative. We sat with them, we sat with the CEO, we sat with their logistics specialists. There is, one, the nonprofit organization need to be formed. I mean, we can talk about co-ops all day, but if there is no nonprofit organization that is doing the work or having the logistical partnership of a HEB, because what happens is, the last week before expiration, they put it on a truck and they bring it to all of their cooperative partners just so they can move the inventory off of the shelves and it goes into the shelves of the co-op. Then the co-op has to restamp it, resell it, and push it back out. And in order for them to have a holistic point of view, they do microgreens and growing in the back just so they can offset some of the profit that they're not gaining from on the shelves. So again, I've been at that stage.
I get the professional management, marketing, and the assets and the debits and the pay and bringing everything in. But when you're hungry, it doesn't matter.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you have it in your heart and that is something that everyone's wanting to do in this city, you can make a long time a short time. So I just think, again, very elementary, I am, remember, that working together and doing it in a fashion where we want it quickly, then we can get it.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the spirit, I would hope, that everyone that's in here that's interested, Reverend Brown, you, I know I shouldn't call your name all out. I shouldn't call your name, Mr. Russell, all out. But I think when we work together, we can move quicker and we can move better. And I think that's what we're missing right now. Everybody want a grocery store. Everybody's talking about what we need to get a grocery store. And we're talking these timelines. We don't want to hear that. We want to know when will we be able to go and eat and buy food. And I think that was a good point. And I'm sorry, Mayor, that when you ask him, can you bring one here right now? That I think that's, I think those are very good points. Because what you said and what Mr. Brown said go together. And I think if you all put it together, we'll have a whole.
Yeah, but we do have another presentation in two weeks on the grocery store.
So, yeah, so I think after the two weeks, and this may be a little crazy, that when everybody says, oh, I know you're going to get me.
No, I'm not because you can't speak for the, you can't speak for the council. You can say what you want to, but you can't speak for the council.
Well, my opinion is that when we finish with this third person, that they all, one, two, and three need to get together. And they need to sit at the table and see how we can make it all together and make it work.
Yes, ma'am. Or the reality of it is, can it even work for any one of the three?
That's right.
That's the reality. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have kind of discussed a whole lot here. I think the bottom line is, I'm just trying to do it, understand it in layman terms. I know we had a lot of presentations here. But when it comes down, you mentioned about 40, you know, negotiating with, you know, we put, it's like a down payment and we'll get our grocery store. That's what it sounds like. But then, again, you said there's a lot of layers. I think the citizens need to understand, they wanted, they just want a grocery store. And let me say this, I am with Councilwoman Gonzalez. Mr. Russell, you guys have done great work and we are appreciative of this. But, and I don't mean to sound but, you have done it, period. You have done great work. But we need to understand what we're dealing with. And we need to take off the layers so we can really understand. Because when you mentioned layers, then you mentioned about 49. Do you already have a grocery store? Does this mean that if we, as the mayor had asked, if we come with, you know, you're saying if we come with this proposal that you have, we have $49,000, $50,000, boom. It's guaranteed a grocery store. But what I'm understanding, that grocery store may come, but it may have a lot of other things that we may have to contribute to. I just want to be clear of what you're saying, Mr. Russell.
Well, I appreciate your question. But even going back into, in July, there was a motion and a second that was on the floor to figure out what IBCC can do and bring to the city. Now, when we come to the table and open up and say this is what we can do to the city, now, there's some push-pull in it. But I definitely understand what you're saying. The layers that I was communicating about is layers when it comes to a cooperative, a co-op grocery store. That's the layers. Because that's a nonprofit organization, similar to the Refuge Corporation. There are so many layers to it.
Yes, sir.
So that's what the layers was about. So it's not layers to the grocery store, but layers to a cooperative grocery store.
Okay, so the bottom line again is that if you, if we make an agreement with you, then North Colleen pretty much guaranteed a grocery store.
So let's be serious about business. There are no guarantees in business. It's about doing the work. Just like looking up any other resolutions that I've seen that come across the screen, we're going into a resolution, RS 000-1, going into professional service agreement for this for $15,000, $20,000, $130,000. But then when you have someone local to come up and say, this is what we can do for the city, it's not the same. And I'm trying to understand, like, we're here.
Yes, sir.
We eat, we play, we shop, we do our events. We bring thousands of people downtown. And it's not just about the event, but it's about the relationships.
But I'm just piggybacking off what you just said, that you have a developer. You know of a developer.
Yes, sir.
That's ready to come to Colleen.
Yes, sir.
I'm just piggybacking off of what you just said.
Correct.
So if that's the case, to me, everybody understand that you have a developer. And what you're saying, let's negotiate and we'll get that developer and we'll get that store here.
Correct. And let's not forget who brought them here. In the same, because it sounds like it's saying, well, what do we need you for? If you already have a solution and it's not who brought it, but we thank you for your service.
Because I would have rather heard, when you came up with your presentation, to say, council, we have a developer. This was ax of you. You did not share that until that was axed. Point of order, Madam Mayor.
I know, I got it. Ms. Brown, that is your second warning. Please stop. I do not want to put you out. But please stop interrupting a council member when speaking. Mr. Solomon, Councilman Solomon, the floor is yours.
So getting back to my thought.
Yes, sir.
It's funny how we won't interrupt those who are up here. We don't do that. So, but what I'm saying is, Mr. Russell, making it clear of what you're saying is that you have that, you have that developer. And because we want to know, because time is of the essence if we have that. You know, if you're for sure. So we don't want to be back and forth. I think the council saying, we don't want to, we don't want to keep going back and forth.
Correct.
Either we have it or either we don't.
Right.
And we don't want to be, you know, sound like, hey, we got this and.
Councilmember Solomon.
We don't have it.
Your time is up, but you do.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
But, sir, 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 sir. You have three times to speak for three minutes. You can ask the council to use the remaining six minutes altogether to complete what you're saying.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll make that request, Madam Mayor.
Counsel, they all say yes. Sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Because I think that we, so I'm just trying to make it clear for us and for the citizens of Colleen that, you know, we don't want to go back and forth. We want to hear this tomorrow in the newspaper, you know, okay, it's still up in the air. And so we just want to know the stance of the IBBC and what you're bringing. Because I really think that we do need to have another RFP brought out and then you could respond to that. That's what, that's my opinion, you know. So, anyway.
So I would say, one, we need to establish a LOI. Well, go back. One, NDA. Two, LOI. Three, reopen the RFP. And then after that, there's really going to have to be a room where, similar to what we did in 2013, where KEDC is in a room, we're in a room, city's in a room, and we're communicating about what are the incentives to bring in this particular product. So NDA. So we all know what we talking about, what we're not going to talk about outside the room. The LOI, this is the grocery or developer that you're, that we are willing or interested in working with. And then from there, let's go ahead and open the RFP. Because you don't want to open the RFP if that is not what's going to be fulfilled with a request for a proposal. So those are my recommendations. If we're going to ask, what are we going to do different, let's try that different.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Russell, one of the things that you said, we are truly appreciative of everything you have done, not only with this grocery store, for everything you have done downtown. But for this council that is responsible for taxpayers' dollars and anybody else that bring a RFP before us, we have a complete package. We know what we're buying. We're just not giving away money blindly. So I don't want you to come across. Officers, please remove Melissa Brown from the chamber. And also, you cough again. That's okay. That's your last warning. You're doing this intentionally to disrupt the meeting. That is your last warning. Next time, you're gone. I apologize. And it's not like, I can only speak for Councilwoman Gonzalez and myself, Mr. Kegel. We have walked every step with you, even Mr. Sutton, even KEDC. We have gone beyond. I can go on with Zoom. Anything that was requested of me or Councilwoman Gonzalez, we have been there through the whole process. And I don't want it to come across to the residents or anyone that right now we're beating up on you because that is not the case. We carried this. When you and Councilwoman Gonzalez started with this, I was not included. But when it dropped, no one cared. No one continued to work on it. I went back and pulled it and called you on the phone and say, hey, let's work together. Let's see, can I help you with this grocery store? Because the north side of Colleen need a grocery store. That has been the only thing on my bucket list as the mayor of this city that I have not completed. And I do have a desire to complete that. I have worked closely with IBCC, and I know Mr. Kegel have. I know Mrs. Wilson spent a month, I'm assuming, 30 days, 60 days. I don't know, from the last time we said it in July. So I don't want that to come across. But as everyone know, we have an extremely tight budget. Not to us, we didn't do this. It was put on us. If I had to say, I want a grocery store, but I also want a homeless shelter because there are a part of our community also. And I don't want, I don't like that they're pending. And Councilwoman Cobb, I don't like, no pun intended, comparing to when you have one person, Mr. Brown, that was invited, came through Councilwoman Gonzalez and brought to me and Mr. Kegel because there was no motion on the grocery store. So he stood up and decided. The person that's coming from Dallas, that area, there was no motion on the grocery store. And now he's here, and then now you working with Ms. Wilson, now you're back. So those individuals came into play because the motion for a grocery store on the north side with Oklahoma, it failed. And there was no more action. So we're trying to work with everyone to come up with solutions that is best suited for the residents on the north side of town. And Councilwoman Sagara, even though it was played down, he's right. Right now, there is a grocery store over there that can meet the need. Can it meet all needs of the type of food people want? No. But right now, I just want you to know, we have the utmost respect for you. And try to understand the position we are in now with three options when there was nothing but one. And we're not downplaying what you have done. We celebrate that. We celebrate anybody that helped out the City of Colleen. But also, when it comes to RFP, we have all the information. Councilmember Solomon just asked, okay, explain to why are we giving $50,000 for, almost, to go behind closed doors? And this may not be something that's even feasible for the City of Colleen. That's all he was asking for. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
You pretty much summed it up there. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that I was not coming across as a push and pull. I don't want to do that. I just want to make sure that my questions from the constituents was asked and answered. And thank you for clearing that up for us. I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you, sir. And I want to go back to what Councilwoman Gonzalez, I mean, Cobb made a motion of direction for $50,000. And it goes back to that. That is a motion of direction that was put out for Mr. Kegel to find at the end of the year, the $50,000 for IBCC to bring in a grocery store. Am I wrong? Correct. However, when that statement was made, from my understanding, we hadn't gone through the budget yet. Am I correct, Mr. Kegel? Am I missing something?
No, ma'am, but the whole point of that was it would be at the end of the year.
Yes, sir, if the money was there to do it. So that was her motion. Her motion was never, you must give if it's there. And if I had to say on how we bring a grocery store here, and I can only speak this. You have great information, the market study, we already been there, done it, all these great things. But I think Councilmember Solomon said it best. If we really want to get serious about a grocery store, taking everyone under consideration, is do a RFP, the council decide, along with the staff, and what we want to see in a grocery store. And then we put it out, and whoever meet that need, even if it's feasible. We don't know that. We move forward, but I don't know which way the council is going to go with this. Counsel, do y'all have any more comments on this? Councilmember Alvarez. Mr. Russell, thank you. Oh, do you have any closing comments? I apologize.
At the time in twenty-three, when I did send an email, and they said staff was looking it up, and I haven't got a reply yet.
I'm sorry. Could you speak in the mic? I couldn't hear the question.
At the, I didn't ask it yet. At the time in twenty-three, when there were portions of the ARPA that was remaining, and I think Mayor, well, I think Councilman Segarra had mentioned to take twenty-three or twenty-six thousand for the refrigerators at the grocery store downtown, the remaining balance on that grocery store initiative, has that been reallocated and put somewhere else, or is that earmarked and stayed where it was?
I remember that. That's a good point. Can anyone answer that question? I remember that. You're right.
I, I don't remember exactly what the funds were, but I do know that all the ARPA funding has been reallocated and, and spent, or it's contracted for.
So, thank you, Mr. Cagle. Mr. Russell, you sent an email to who? You said something about you did not get a reply back. This information, I, I, I don't know about.
It's, it's still being searched in staff. So, that's, I guess it's still there being searched.
Yeah, Mayor, he, he emailed me to find it. I just couldn't track down any information yet. We're still looking, but I haven't found anything to date.
Okay. Well, Mr. Russell, one thing you do have in the favor coming out of this. There was a motion of direction that was made by this council and voted upon, that at the end of the year, if there's fifty thousand dollars, I think fifty thousand available, if it's there, they all did vote on it, that it would go to you. But it, it doesn't take away from the question. We can meet all we want to, but I do think in the future, when, when we working with taxpayers, this is for everybody. We, we ask, I know I do, hard questions across the board. I do. I don't know about the council, but I do. I just think it's, it's just out of common courtesy. If they ask you, if you can't answer, I understand. You want to go behind closed doors. But i- if this person can come, and I know as well as you know, they can get here. But it is going to cost some money to sustain it. They're going to go, we're going to go through the same thing that we went through with the, the business in Oklahoma. They're going to need money for a building. They're going to need probably infrastructure. It does, it's just any business. So, the, the, what we're paying for, the truth of the matter is, for you to do everything that you have stated, to try to recruit a grocery store to come here, and there is no guarantee that we still will have a grocery store. Am I correct? You're going to do your part, but there's no guarantee we're going to get one. Is that correct?
Uh, I would say yes and no. I mean, it's the cost of doing consultation. You offer information. Correct. So, I would say start it with, open the RFP. So, whoever is out here that's willing to do it, they'll put it out, they'll put it out there, and they put their best foot forward.
So, what I'm looking for, the city won't be doing anything, because what I'm understanding from what you said, if we're paying you, you're going to provide those services for us. I, I'm telling you, I went through your whole package two or three times trying to get an understanding. We're not providing anything. We're paying you like we do everybody else. We're paying you, if the council agree to this, a service agreement that you will go out and you will do the work and bring us a grocery store. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Work session. Discuss agenda items four through fourteen for the August fifth, twenty-twenty-five regular session. MN twenty-five zero one eight, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of July first, twenty-twenty-five. MN twenty-five zero one nine, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. MN twenty-five zero two zero, consider minutes of special city council meeting of July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. RS twenty-five one two three, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real property at fifteen-ten Linda Lane.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Madam City Attorney.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This is an item regarding the sale of real property. So, and this is regarding fifteen-ten Linda Lane. In February of twenty-twenty-five, staff identified this parcel that's vacant and unimproved that we own, that the city owns in Feast Simple. It's located at fifteen-ten Linda Lane and is six thousand six hundred fifteen square feet. The property was conveyed to the city in February twenty-seventeen. It's located within a residential district, which is Sugarloaf Estates, and surrounded by existing single-family homes, and the city does not have any plans to use the property. So, these, these next couple slides are of the location of the property. So, the map shows that, that's south of I fourteen and west of one ninety-five, and then we have a zoomed in shot of that, as well as the property, and it's the starred property in the middle of that neighborhood. The property is currently delinquent in property taxes from twenty-twelve to twenty-seventeen, and that total is one thousand one hundred and five dollars and ten cents. These past due taxes would become the responsibility of the new owner, would not be affected by the sale. The property has liens that are recorded by the city of Colleen in connection with abatement of high grass and weeds prior to the city owning the property, and those liens total five thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. City policy allows for the waiver of these liens if it would constitute a public purpose, and staff believes that the waiver of the liens would constitute a public purpose in this case, because it would make the property, it makes the properties more marketable, it puts the properties back on the tax rolls, and it relieves the city of the continuing maintenance responsibility for the properties. The sale would waive these liens. This is a view of the property, looking east from Linda Lane and then west toward Linda Lane. So, staff engaged a realty company to publicly advertise this property. The properties were listed for cash-only offers on an as-is basis, initially receiving three cash offers. These were initially scheduled to come with you with the prior property that came a couple months ago to you. These offers were withdrawn, and the property was relisted, so we have a single cash offer at this time of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. If approved, property would be conveyed to, via special warranty deed with the release of lien. So, your alternatives are to not authorize the sale, to authorize it for more than thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, or authorize the sale for the thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, and staff recommends authorizing the sale for the thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Authorizing city manager to execute all documentation necessary to complete the sale. I'm here for any questions you have.
RS twenty-five one two five, consider a memorandum resolution approving a lease agreement with Crown Castle Towers LLC for the construction of a cell tower and authorize a twenty-five-foot-wide access utility easement.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, good evening. A little background on this one. In November twenty-twenty-four, Crown Castle LLC contacted city staff to discuss the availability of land for the construction of a cell tower on the southeastern side of the city. The city-owned property south of Stagecoach Road and east Acorn Creek would be prime, would be a prime location identified by the city staff and by the company. This is, the actual physical address is fifty-twenty Rosewood. During the period of the lease agreement, we're going to have an option period of about a two-year option period with, with, at this time, we'll be paying, three thousand dollars will be paid within sixty days of execution of this agreement to the city for them to go through the option period. What option period would allow them to do is to look at the feasibility, look at all the regulatory requirements, state, local, and federal requirements for the, for the property, meet all permitting and regulatory guidance for that. The lease term will be, initial lease will be five years, at two thousand dollars per month, which is consistent with what we doing with other properties with leasing agreements for these cell towers. There'll be up to nineteen additional five-year agreements with fifteen, with a fifteen percent increase beginning, at the beginning of each term. This is the location, the sixty-by-sixty lease area is a write-off of Rosewood is in the, in the floodplain, so it's nothing that we're currently using that for, other than the maintenance crews are having to maintain it. It's about a half an acre plot that they're going to be leasing, and as stated before, it'd be a two thousand dollar a month agreement for that. They'll also get a utility easement coming from Stagecoach Road to that property. Staff recommend, uh, recommend that we authorize the city manager or his designate to approve the lease agreement with the utility access easement with the Crown Castle LLC for the cell tower and the utilization of the twenty-five-foot-wide access utility easement from Stagecoach Road, and authorize the city manager or his designate to execute any and all additional documentation necessary to effectuate the lease agreement. That, Miss Adams, here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Aronos, we're not going to have a big Christmas tree, because I'm very disappointed in the one we do have.
No, ma'am. That's not going to be the intent. As I stated before, they will go through the permitting process, and we'll make sure it's something that's, that, that kind of goes with the surrounding area. It's just a big, big tower. We're not going to have a Christmas tree.
Yes, sir, because Christmas only come in December.
I think we understand their assignment, ma'am.
Thank you. There, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
You asked my question, Madam. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five one two six, consider a memorandum resolution approving an agreement with Quick Roofing Tips Contract number two-five-zero-one-zero-four-zero-one for roof repair replacement at Colleen Police Department Headquarters in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you?
I'm doing wonderful. Thank you. How are you?
It's good to see you. Great.
Good. All right. I will be quick and to the point. This request is to seek approval to repair two major sections of the roof of the Colleen Police Department Headquarters on Community Boulevard. The third-floor roof and the west roof over the evidence room are in complete disrepair. Building Services has performed temporary patching for several years, and these measures are no longer effective. The roof's current condition now jeopardizes the integrity of the facility and preservation of vital police records and evidence. Since January of twenty-twenty-four, there have been eighteen documented requests for roof repair to the building. More recently in May, a formal assessment was completed, and it was determined that the roof system over the evidence room must be replaced. The police department has expended approximately nine thousand dollars in patching the roof. The urgency of the repairs detailed below, below, initial plans were delayed, were to be delayed until fiscal year twenty-seven to happen concurrently with the evidence room expansion. Recent severe storms has worsened the condition of the roof. Immediate concerns and risk include water intrusion into the evidence room and third floor, risk of contaminated or destroyed evidence, compromised investigations, legal and reputational liability, and air quality issues. This here is a picture of the outside of the roof where the water is getting in. And this is the evidence room, correct, Chief? This is evidence of the roof in the evidence room, of the roof, the water in the evidence room with wet floors and a soaked ceiling. Quick Roofing with Tips Contract twenty-five oh one oh four oh one has given us these replacement and repair costs. Third floor will be a repair for a hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents. The evidence room will be a replacement for a hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents, for a total cost of two hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager or his designate to execute an agreement with Quick Roofing for repairs at PD Headquarters in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents, and to execute any and all change orders as permitted by state and local law.
Thank you. My question to you, do we have other bidder, bidders for this? As if it was just one, because I didn't see them.
No, and it was just one because of the emergency nature that was needed for the repair, and we didn't get bids. We did a quote through the tips, because of the emergency status of this need.
Okay, so, explain that to me. So, through emergency status, there's another way other than putting out for a bid in case of an emergency? I just don't know. Mr. Cagle?
Sure. We went through a purchasing cooperative where the bidding is already done. It was on, we considered it an emergency basis, but the state of Texas considers that a bid when you go through a purchasing cooperative, because those bids are done ahead of time, and they're available for you.
Okay. Did we not put in the budget for evidence room or something?
Yes, ma'am.
So, where they have the, the item set now is just temporarily, until we have the new room, or they need all this space? Chief, you can come up. I'm, I just know in our budget, we put this. So, I'm just trying to put it all together. That's all.
We, we had enough budget to expand the property room, but that wasn't happening until twenty-twenty-seven. So, we've just been patching the roof until we can get to that point, but it's at a point right now where it's too late. The roof is too far gone, and many of y'all have been to our property room, evidence room, and water leakage, severely damaged, all the evidence we have in there. We have sexual assault kits, old evidence that we can't get rid of, and damage that will compromise the investigations and the court case, too.
So, it's more cost-effective, because we got to fix the roof anyway, as Tiffany, I mean, Ms.
Yes, ma'am.
Magner stated. Thank you, Chief, because the roof need to be fixed anyway.
Correct. It would have been a part of the specs, and considered for the specs with the overall enhancement that they were going to do to the evidence room anyway.
Okay, okay. We just doing it ahead of schedule, because it's needed now.
Absolutely.
That is what I was looking for. Okay. Counselmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Adams, and then Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, both.
I know, we all get the door knocks of the insurance adjusters for our roofs. So, I was wondering, we, I know the city is self-insured, but would this cover, and we use TML through the risk rule, would this not have been covered as a TML coverage?
It was. There was an attempt to get a claim with TML, but it was denied, and that was in June of, I'm sorry, that was in June of twenty-twenty-four. But when Building Services reached out to TML again, they were told that this would not qualify for their coverage.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, for clarification for everyone, it wasn't a storm. It was just wear and tear on the building.
It was wear and tear, and then we had a lot of rain, and then it just came through, because it was, the roof was already in disrepair with the more recent storm, so this wasn't as a result of that.
So, to answer your question, that is why TML, just just say they didn't cover it, why they didn't cover it. That's what I was trying to get out. That's all. I think that's important for council to have that information. Councilwoman Gonzalez, and then Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you. And just for clarity, when it says third four-floor repair, sometimes estimates come through from roofers when they don't include the actual interior repairs. Does this estimate include not only exterior repairs, but also interior repairs to the facility?
At this moment, I don't have
Can we confirm that?
but I will confirm that, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to know if any equipment or evidence was damaged?
No, sir. We just, we just completed the audit about two months ago, and there was nothing, you know, damaged or lost. We still have, you know, control of our property room and our evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, when do this start, working on it? Since if the council vote on it tonight, when do the repair starts? Because it's, according to Chief, it's very, extremely important that nothing get damaged in the evidence room. So, when do we start?
With the approval of council and all of the signing, they expect to start in about two weeks.
Okay, and Chief, in the meanwhile, if it rains within two weeks, what happens then?
We just keep covering the evidence and with, with the tarp that we have, and move stuff around with the leak. Because it leaks, it leaks low over the place, so it's hard to tell where it's going to leak at. So, when we see the leak, we move the evidence out the room, cover it up with a tarp, and then when it dries, we move it back. So, it's just a shell game. We just move stuff around.
Thank you. So, thank you both for thoroughly explaining, because that's a large amount of money to me, and we did not bid out. That was concerning, but you explained why, and that's all I'm asking, is to who, what, when, where, and why. And you did an excellent job. Thank you both.
Madam Mayor, I had another question about me.
You didn't, I didn't see it on.
I just, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes, sir.
And I saw in the packet that, you know, we, the department paid out of your operating funds?
Yes, sir. We paid out, we have a building services fund account, and we pay out repairs for that.
You answered the second question. All right. Thanks.
Thank you both. Madam Secretary.
DS twenty-five zero four two, discuss and consider changes to propose fiscal year twenty-twenty-six operating and CIP budget.
Thank you, Counsel. Mr. Cagle have this item and the next one. Mr. Cagle?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Counsel, and these, these two items are really intertwined, but we got to start with one. So, we're going to start with the budget, and as you know, we've been showing been showing you this calendar since February and, uh, we just keep adding check marks. So here we are at August 5th and, uh, tonight there will be an action item for you to set, uh, that's really the next one, but you'll, to, to set a, a maximum tax rate. It'd be a tax, the adoption is in September, but the rate you set tonight will be one that you can't go over. You can go under it, but, but not over it. Um, so there was motions of direction, uh, July 1st and, um, we already talked about some of these, but, um, the first two, KEDC and IBCC, those are, uh, something to consider at the end of the year. Um, when you did tell us in the next motion of direction, uh, to look at a 72 cent tax rate, the next two that were discussed, we in, included in the 26 proposed budget. Um, so then that we get to that motion of direction to reduce, uh, council travel, uh, by 80,250 and then to consider a tax rate of 72 cents prioritizing compensation and public safety. And if, if you remember the time, I said, we don't have the, um, certified role and we're not the entity that does the tax cap calculation. That, that's the appraisal district. And it's, it's a very complicated and a very long formula. We did our best to estimate what we thought it was gonna be, but it came in, uh, less than 72 cents. It came in at 70.15. So if you go over 70.15 like 72 is, that would trigger an automatic election in November. And I don't think anybody wanted that. So we base this budget on, uh, a tax rate of 70.14, which is just under the, uh, automatic, um, election rate. And the things that are recommended tonight are another downtown unit that would be, uh, more than nighttime hours comprised of four officers and one sergeant. Um, one percent, an additional 1% cola from four to 5% uh, across the entire city. Uh, the next one is called traffic signal inventory and maintenance plan. Right now, when you look at a, a signalized intersection and you see the lights, you see the standards, but there's also, uh, the operations of that, the, the technical electronic aspects in the control box on one of the corners. And across the city, ours average well over 20 years in age. And if we don't start replacing these, um, we're gonna be in serious trouble at some point. And the ones that we do have, the new ones that we have are generally the result of an accident and someone's insurance paid for it. That's how we've been replacing them so far. This would replace, uh, control boxes on all the signalized intersections on WS Young. That, that would be it. Um, a- as you know, we're about to cut the ribbon on the, the new fire station EOC support services. One thing that was left out was the fire department training tower, recommending that we add, add money to fin, to build that. Then, uh, a deputy chief with vehicle and equipment in the fire department. One assistant city manager. Um, and when you see that amount there, you gotta understand, that's not the salary. That was reported, uh, that that was a salary. That's not the salary. That's salary benefits and equipment. Um, then the police department impound lot, I believe you've seen, uh, we, we've had a, some suggestions from the internal audit on this. We've known we've needed a, a spot for some time and this would allow us to create, uh, an impound lot at the, um, the new vehicle maintenance yard. Then an IT security manager that, uh, currently Mr. Resto provides all of these services on his own in addition to running the department. And this person would be totally dedicated to IT security. And then the last position would be a, a bailiff in the municipal court. Um, right now we have, uh, a marshal and a deputy marshal. And, uh, there's oftentimes the employees in court are not feeling safe and we need an additional, uh, law enforcement officer there. Um, then the money for the children's advocacy center. I, I believe this is an extension of the police department. Um, they have people that are trained in, uh, in, in questioning young children that have witnessed or been victims of, of sexual abuse. And, um, they're specifically trained for that. It's a very unique talent and they provide great support to our police department. And I would advocate that every law enforcement agency in Bell County ought to be contributing to this. Cause, um, I just think you have to look to a city south of us not too long ago that had a terrible case that was mishandled because they didn't use their child advocacy center. And it was, I don't think it's ever gonna be known, um, uh, the individual accused was guilty or not guilty. Um, then, uh, the, the police department, this is just a small portion of replacing their body armor. Um, right now, and the next one is field training officer. Right now, when cadets come out of the academy, when they pass their test, they go into field training. We don't just put them on the street by themselves. We put them in, in a car with a field training officer that continues to train them. And, and sometimes cadets make it all the way through the academy, pass their test and wash out in field training. They find out it's either not for them or it's not what they thought it was. Uh, but the field training officer is critical, uh, to advancing these cadets. And right now they do it for no additional pay. And this would be incentive pay for our field training officers. Um, next to last is reclass a fire captain to battalion chief. Uh, right now, one of our, uh, assistant chiefs is acting as the fire marshal and we expect a, a retirement in the not too distant future. And we want to have, uh, someone under him training and be ready for that day. So we'll have continuous operations, uh, in the fire marshal office. And the last one is fire department arson investigator, the assignment pay. Um, this is an additional duties. To be an arson investigator, you also have to be a certified police officer. Um, and we have some, but this would encourage, we need more and this would encourage more people to apply for those jobs. And so when I received the direction of 72 cents, this is the list we came up with. Um, and then I'll show you this information in the next one, but our current rate is .6573 or the, the way we typically, typically say it is 65 cents, 65.73 cents. The no new revenue rate that generates the same tax revenue as the prior year from properties that are taxed in both years is 64.87, uh, just a little less than a penny under the current rate. The rate we're recommending, recommending is 70.14 cents. And the voter approval rate, if you go over that rate, triggers an automatic election, is 70.15 cents. Now, um, as I said, we didn't have enough money at 70.15, so we made some recommendations that this list would be included, um, in the operating budget. And then the next one at year end, we expect, uh, when this year's over, that the year in savings will be a fair amount less than they have been in the past, but we'll still have enough money and there'll be a, a, a small amount left over after this. Um, that we, we go ahead and put this in the budget with year in savings of the fire department training tower, the impound lot and the vehicle and equipment for the four officer sergeant and the deputy chief. And that way, we have everything in this budget that would have been covered under the 72 cents. And if you notice the main different, difference here, the items on this list are basically one-time cost because you don't expect, when you add, when you go back and you add four officers, a sergeant, you expect you're gonna have those every year. And you have to be prepared to be funded to pay for those every year. And that's the reason we split those out between the recurring and, and non-recurring. And, and so there will be changes from the proposed budget because one thing that you saw, the 1% increase was citywide. So we have employees that are in the various different funds. So the hotel occupancy fund, um, we believe we've identified in most of these funds, a little additional interest income to pay for the cola, aviation, um, they were adequately but, budgeted for one more percent, solid waste, the additional percent from interest income, water and sewer, the same thing, drainage utility, the same thing, uh, the fleet fund, risk management and, uh, IT fund, essentially the same, paying for these from either, uh, interest revenue or in the case of the IT fund, we've got to have a little additional transfer from the general fund. So this is the, the total proposed budget with the changes that we just talked about. The, um, the revenues of 321 million versus expenses of 339, but then you take out the transfers and we have 279 million in revenues and expenses for a balanced budget for fiscal year 26. And so, um, later when you consider this item again, either, we'd like to see a motion of direction to, to, to make these, uh, recommendations or to change them, whatever, whatever you think you need to add or detract or deduct from those, uh, things that I just proposed. And Mayor, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy for any questions.
Mr. Kegel, can you go to, I think it's slide four, with the new budget? Uh, we, we gave a motion of direction for the 0.72 tax rate.
Yes ma'am.
And then you come back and you say, well, we overshot it, it's 0.714. Uh, yeah, right here. So, uh, no. It's, yes sir, correct. Now, would you go to the next one please? Okay. So with that and the, what we discussed was with the 0.72 was to focus on our first responders and.
Yes ma'am.
Whatever, okay. So I'm, I guess since we made that motion of direction, do we have to go back and change it? Because we did make a motion, uh, direction based on the information we thought was 0.72. Do we change it to 0.714 now?
Yes ma'am, that's our recommendation and, and that's actually the ne, the next item. So tonight, uh, when I go to that next item, you, you have to set some sort of maximum tax rate tonight. Doesn't mean it's gonna be the one you're gonna adopt necessarily, but it's one that you can't go over without starting the whole process over. And usually by that time, there's not enough time left in the year to finish it. So for all practical purposes, the rate that you set tonight will be the maximum one that you can adopt in September.
Okay. My next question to you, uh, it was basically focusing on the police and fire department. And I talked to you briefly.
Yes ma'am.
Who's gonna meet with the chiefs. With the 0.714, do, do we have everything that is a need? See, you said a lot of things and most people don't know why there is a need for it. We know there's a need. If you met with the police and fire chief, they know there's a need, but do we meet their needs based on the 0.714? Or we got close to it?
Well, that, that's, that's a very.
That's a loaded question?
No, it's okay. It's, it's a very big question. And, and I think you were limited it just to police and fire. So, um, I'm gonna say it depends on who you ask.
No, it was, it was employee compensation too.
Ye, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, but, but the question about meeting all their needs, um, that, that's a tough one. We've met a lot of them and we've been able to meet more than, than we've done in the past. And I would say we're in a better spot i- if this is passed than we have been in some time. But I, it's gonna be hard to say we're meeting all the needs.
Okay, so we can know moving forward in the next budget, you know, what things they might need?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, I, I agree with everything you have presented. I would just want to ask those questions.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Segaro and then Mayor Protem.
Thank you Mayor. I was just looking at our past rates and, um, I know a lot has to do with the valuation of homes, but in looking at our rates in the past, I mean, it's like in 2017, we were at .7498.
Yes sir.
And that was a lot higher. Cause I know it, uh, 2011 was .748. And so we've kind of been lowering it. I mean, in 24, it was .6208. And then I know we went up to the 6573, right?
Yes sir.
And so it's just, you know, I, I, I kinda understand why that happened, you know, because we were taking in more revenue. But, uh, it, it just makes me think, you know, when we had like a lot of unfunded mandates and, you know, especially with what the state, you know, done with our, um, exemptions there. And, uh, we were lowering the tax rate. So just kinda thought, I was just thinking about that, but I don't have a question. I just wanted to bring that as an awareness that, you know, in 2017, it was a lot higher than what we're contemplating right now.
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Thanks Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Kegel, I, you know, once, once we did the motion of direction, um, I'm sure some of us got quite a few messages and words. There are some people that say, yeah, let's raise the taxes because we gotta pay for the stuff that we want. Then there are some people that are concerned that they might tax them out of a home. Um, and then you have folks that wondering why we don't do the voter approval rate. Um, you know, I, I, you know, back when we did the comprehensive plan, we did the Venn diagram that showed what we need, what we want, and what we got to pay for. Um, and then looking, Mr. Segaro already covered what I was gonna bring up about the previous tax rate. Can you, you know off the top, what would the average taxpayer pay under this valuation?
Yes sir, and I have that, all that information in the next, next presentation.
Yeah, thanks. And then, um, what effect of any, and I know you're not a real estate prognosticator, but what effect of any would that have on rent? Uh, and I, I know a lot of that depends on the property manager.
Yes sir. Um, well, when we look at those numbers, um, I guess if you're looking at a, a, a single family rental or a duplex rental, you can kind of extrapolate. And it is the, uh, is the prop, is the property owner gonna pass along 100%? Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Sometimes they pass along more. Uh, you know, you, you just never know exactly, but, um, it, it does get passed through, there's no doubt.
Okay. And then if, if we went to the voter, voter required rate, would that cover all the, the requirements the mayor had brought up?
No, I, I don't think, um, we're so far behind in so many areas. Um, a penny or two more, yeah, I, I can't tell you that's, that's gonna solve everything. There, there's no way, especially if you're looking, s, general fund citywide, not just police and fire.
Gotcha.
Uh, and you, you know, after property taxes essentially fund police and fire and that, they're done. It, it's everything else that funds the rest of the city.
That's a key point to make. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Uh, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor Protem. I think it's very difficult cause whatever you pay, we pay. We, we don't get out of it. But for the services that are provided and this council took on a consideration when that tax increase came up, we're talking about first responders. We're talking about employee compensation to keep them here to continue to provide services. And we hear our city managers saying that we still don't have enough revenue to ensure 100%. And anything that we have left over, that, that goes back to my original question. And thank you, Mayor Protem. We don't have the option just to give away money. It has to be for a purpose, something that benefits the good of the residents of Colleen. And our public safety should be our top priority and also retaining the employees we have. If not, my concern is that we would get in a crisis trying to retrain them all over again. And my question would be to the council, where are we gonna get the funding to do that? So thank you for that, Mr. Kegel.
Yes ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25127, consider a memorandum resolution setting the preliminary property tax rate for the fiscal year 2026 annual budget and setting the date to hold a public hearing.
So, yes ma'am. Yes. Yes. Um, so this is the information that you just saw. Um, and this is, uh, as it's broken down, you know, our tax rate is broken down between operations and debt service. And so you can see the change, uh, from 25 to 26 on the operations. And then on the debt service, there's an increase because of the, uh, the, the debt issue that we had. And that's 2.71 cents. You add the 1.7 cents increase on operations and you get an increased tax rate of 4.41 cents. And the, I'll still get to your question, I'm not there yet, but, um, so if you wanna compare us against all of our comparisons But so if you want to compare us against all of our comparison cities that we generally use, you look at, we can look at all their tax rates. Now, every one that we have in here now is their current tax rate. We know some of them are going up. I don't know if any are going down, that's always a possibility. But currently, we're in about the middle of the pack with this increase. We go closer to the top. But let's look a little deeper into that comparison. And so it's very possible that someone with the lowest tax rate can, a homeowner could be paying essentially the same tax bill as somebody with the highest tax rate. That's because there's a very wide difference in value because that's how your tax bill is worked. It's rate times value. So let's look at this in a different way. Same cities, looking at their taxable value, divide it by the population to even it out. And you can see that in Round Rock, a smaller city than Colleen, they have $186,000 in value per person. That's every person. Where in Colleen, we're at $65,000. Now, that's not totally tied to residential. Obviously, Round Rock and I-35, they have more commercial property than we have. But this is a good gauge to tell you the wealth of a city. And you can see that on the previous slide, the tax rate was higher. But on this slide, the values are much lower, equals out a bit. In addition, the two largest revenues, we're talking about the tax rate now, but the two largest revenues in almost any city are sales tax and property tax. And just to put that in comparison, Round Rock, a city of about 140,000, on an annual basis, they receive about 160 million in sales tax. And Colleen receives about 47 million. Midland, just over 100,000, 211 million in sales tax. And Colleen at 47. So on the two main revenues, we're very low in valuation and we're low in sales tax. Now, this is the question, well, it's still the next one. Our current rate of 65 cents generates $71 million in value. And if we left the rate the same, that would be 4.5 million less than the proposed rate. The no new revenue rate here is even, would be, if we adopted the no new revenue rate, that's an even greater reduction of 5.4 million. The first proposal of 68 cents would be 2.1 million less than the proposed. And the one that we are proposing tonight is there that generates 76,465,462. So here's the question that was being asked. So last year, at 2025, the median valued homestead property was 220,000. The proposed is 233. And that's a larger increase than most people saw. That's because last year, there was also new property added to the tax roll at higher value. But you have a tax rate increase of 4.41 cents that generates an annual property tax levy under, in 2025, it was $1,452. With the new tax rate and new value, it's $1,637 for a $185 increase on an annual basis. If you look at that on a monthly basis, it's $15.43 increase. So one thing, I've gone over this a little bit. But today is, you'll later on vote on some tax rate. Our recommendation is 70.14 cents. But whatever you set tonight, it's the maximum rate that can be adopted. And then on September 2nd, we'll have the date of the tax rate public hearing. And then September 2nd, there'll be a vote to adopt a final tax rate. Excuse me, let me go back. And I just want to go back and say a couple of things. When we're out recruiting for employees, they don't really care whether we have an easy ability to pay or a tough ability to pay. They're going to usually the best paying job. Sometime it has to do with where they live. They have to do all that calculation. But that's not something they take into effect. And that's why I thought it was important to increase the cost of living adjustment from four to five. And I think this council, a couple of you were probably on here six, seven years ago, when you decided something had to be done because the turnover was high. We were one of the worst paying entities in central Texas. And over those years, every year, we've worked hard on it. And it's difficult because our competitors increase, too. But now we're at a spot, we saw in the salary survey, we're average or above average in some jobs. And it's made a huge difference in our turnover rate. As you've seen, for the first time in years, we were completely staffed. We had our positions filled in police and fire. And I don't know when that ever occurred before. So there has been a very positive impact from that, the decisions and the focus that started many years ago and we've continued through today. It makes a difference. We're able to pay for employees that stay here and do a good job, and we train them, and they know the city as opposed to being constantly in a training cycle. And when you're constantly in a training cycle, you're spending more money and providing less service. So with that, that's the end of this presentation. This was solely on the tax rate, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. And also Mrs. Tanglin and her team. Are they here? Oh, ma'am, thank you all, all of your whole team for all the hard work you put in. It was a quick decision. I should say a quick turnaround for you. The council put a motion of direction, and your team, as always, you take charge and you make things happen. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Cagle.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam City Secretary, whenever you're ready, ma'am.
PH 25041. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Central Texas Land Development Services on behalf of Herring Legacy Developers Incorporated. Case number Z 2514, to rezone approximately 99.83 acres out of the W E Wall survey. Abstract number 1116 from A Agricultural District and SR1 Suburban Residential Single Family Residential District to Plan Unit Development with SR1 Suburban Residential Single Family Residential District and B3 Local Business District uses. The subject property is generally located northeast of the intersection of East Tremere Road and Chaparral Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. It's always good to see you, Mrs. Messer. How are you doing?
I'm well, thanks. How are you?
Great, great. The floor, you.
All right. Mayor and council, this item is a request to rezone approximately 99.83 acres from SR1, an agricultural to, I'm sorry, from SR1 to Plan Unit Development with SR1 and B3 uses. Subject property is located northeast of the intersection of East Tremere and Chaparral Road. The primary intent of the proposed PUD is to reduce the minimum side yard setbacks in SR1 while still preserving the 70-foot minimum lot width. If approved, the proposed PUD will reduce the minimum setbacks in SR1 by reducing the front yard setback from 25 feet to 20 feet and reducing the side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet. So this breakdown here shows you the minimum lot standards in both SR1 and R1 as they compare to the proposed PUD. So you can see they're preserving the 70-foot lot width associated with SR1, as well as the lot area of 8,400 square feet, reducing the front setback from 25 to 20, side setback from 10 to 5, and preserving the rear setback. Proposed concept plan indicates 254 single-family lots and also includes approximately 3.89 acres designated for B3 Local Business District. Red star indicates the location of the subject property. This aerial shows the boundary of the proposed PUD. So you can see here, this is a breakdown of the current zoning relative to the proposed zoning. This area here is currently zoned SR1. And this area here is currently zoned agricultural. You'll recall that this area was recently annexed. So when it was annexed, it comes in as A Agricultural District. A portion of the property being excluded from the Plan Unit Development is intended to accommodate an existing cell phone tower. In accordance with Chapter 31, towers and antennas are permitted by right only in the agricultural district or the M1 or M2 zoning districts. So you can see here, there's a notch for the cell phone tower, so that area will remain agricultural. Oops. This image shows the proposed concept plan. So you can see the layout of those proposed 254 lots. This is a view of the subject property from Chaparral Road, facing northeast. View of the adjacent property on the south side of Chaparral Road. View facing east on Chaparral. Subject property is on the left in this image. A preliminary plot of the subject property was approved in October 2021. So if the proposed PUD is approved tonight, the new preliminary plot will be required, which will trigger compliance with all of our current development standards, which include things like parkland dedication, street trees, subdivision perimeter walls, architectural standards, traffic impact analysis requirements, and all other requirements that have been put in place since 2021. Subject property is located within the intended growth area on the growth sector map and designated residential mix in the future land use map. We notified 62 surrounding property owners regarding this request, and we've received no written responses either for or against this request. This is the notification map. With regard to parkland dedication, the applicant intends to pay the fees in lieu of parkland dedication. With 245 single-family lots, the fees in lieu of parkland dedication plus the park development fees total $294,000. That staff finds that the applicant's request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are recommending approval of the request as presented. During their meeting on June 23rd, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 8 to 0. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. You know, it borders a very contentious issue that we have as far as roads are coming. I'm sure the question is going to come up. So what, will the developer have to do anything or any changes to Chaparral? If this is approved as a put?
The proposed development would fall under the TIA if indeed it is TIA requirement, if it is replotted. So any requirements triggered by a required TIA would be required.
Okay. Thanks.
So, yes, Wallace was correct. And in regard to the traffic impact, they will have to do a TIA and assess what percentage or what impacts they have, the development would have on the roadway and specifically the intersection of East Tremere and Chaparral. In addition, we will also be getting the right-of-way dedication that we need for that area. Since we have an established corridor, we have defined right-of-way, so that will be required to be put on the plan.
Would this help us with some of the traffic that we have or concerns?
For working towards the ultimate alignment, the ultimate project, it does work us into that direction of getting it done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
PH 25042. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Marion Benjamin Bell, case number Z 2519, to rezone approximately 1.987 acres being lot 1A Block 1 out of the Robinson addition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 1914 North 10th Street, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Mrs. Messer.
Mayor and council, this item is a request to rezone an existing lot of just shy of two acres from B5 to R1. Property is addressed as 1914 North 10th Street. The applicant has submitted a request to rezone the property from B5 to R1, and if approved, intends to subdivide the lot into two different parcels and construct an additional single-family residence on the property. The proposed rezoning does align with the existing residential land use. Property is located within the infill and enhance area on the growth sector map and designated traditional neighborhood on the future land use map. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the parcel. This is a view of the existing home on the lot. View facing south on North 10th Street. View facing north from the subject property. This is the property adjacent across the street. This is the notification boundary. We notified 65 surrounding property owners, and we've received no responses. Staff finds that the applicant's request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are therefore recommending approval as presented. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of 8 to 0. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
There are no questions, thank you. All right, council, we only have two citizens that signed up. We would allow the citizen comments, and then we'll take a break. With that being said, James Seals, good afternoon, good evening. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. So I'm here to talk about the budget. I thought the workshop was very informative, so I appreciate that information. I think a few things from the comp plan I wanted to bring your attention to today and a few other factors. You know, the comp plan states that if you develop responsibly, then you don't have to increase taxes or fees or reduce services as much. And I just want to put out, you know, since April of 2020, and I'll give you this data. You've approved every R1 zoning that's come before you, except for one, which was Featherline, which you eventually approved anyways. So one of the factors or questions I have is if you're developing responsibly and you've approved all these R1s and other items, then why are we still having to raise these tax rates two years in a row? Another item here is from the comp plan. Says that your past decisions to extend its service area and infrastructure to the south without establishing the population density to support it have diluted service levels and infrastructure conditions because there is not sufficient revenue to cover these costs. So my question is, why do you keep approving these rezonings in these areas where you have to completely build new roads, build new infrastructure, new water lines, sewer, when you're probably not going to ever recoup those costs? Another item is streets. Says that you have right now over 1,636 miles of street today. It requires you to be saving or spending an average of $40.9 million per year on street reconstruction, which is $35.7 million more than what you budget today. Mr. Cagle hinted at this by saying the street maintenance fee has helped us slow the decline on our transportation center, our system, but we know we are millions of dollars short in maintaining our residential streets. So my question again is, why are you building all these projects that you can't support from an infrastructure perspective? Sales tax revenue. Temple has 60,000 less in population. And right now, they have a sales tax payment year-to-date that's $1.2 million more than Colleen. Waco has 10,000 less people than Colleen, and they have over $14.9 million in sales tax payment over Colleen. So my question is, you know, what are you doing in this council to continue to provide these infrastructure projects responsibly to where we don't have to keep paying for that? You know, there's a lot of talk about the DV exemptions, but these are known issues, right? You know you're not getting that money. So why do you keep trying to chase? Can I have one more minute, please?
Councilmember Alvarez. Councilwoman.
So I'm just trying to understand why you continue to try to chase. So I'm just trying to understand why you continue to try to chase those deficits with property tax revenue when it's, you're chasing money that you're not going to get back. And Mr. Cagle said almost, I think it's every other house right now is exempt. So you're 50% loss on these projects. Right? And, but we have to pay for that. So you extend infrastructure, you extend all these things, you have to build all these new things to support these zonings that you think you're going to get enough revenue to pay for, and it doesn't happen. And now you have deficits that we have to pay for. So I'm just asking that you please, when you look at these rezonings, these projects, please do that responsibly, consider what we have to pay for. Thank you.
Melissa Brown, you have, Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
Ready? Thank you. To piggyback on the last speaker, why are we building a brand-new road in an undeveloped tract and paying interest on it when we can't pay for the repairs and the rebuilding of the roads that we need? To talk about the grocery store's blessing on the block already has a mobile food pantry. When we were talking about doing mobile co-ops, why are we going to reinvent the wheel? Why not partner with them? They already have something established, let's grow that. But a mobile food pantry and a mobile co-op is a great idea. You just have to be able to get around to it, know where it's going to be, and be able to track that. We don't have a grocery store in downtown, we have a bodega. A grocery store would need to accept WIC and SNAP. A co-op at opening has already been set. It will not accept either of those things. The grocery store the mayor is bringing in at the next meeting has an ask. She said whichever one of the projects is the most cost-effective. Well, you don't say that if you don't already know the person is coming in asking for money. KEDC has received millions since 2019 and hasn't succeeded in bringing a grocery store. $50,000 a year doesn't seem bad to me. KEDC could provide incentives, or the city could, because y'all gave incentives for Walmart to move into Bunny Trail, tens of millions after y'all added up. A co-op will take six to 10 years to open. You want IBCC to disclose proprietary information that we did not discuss publicly when I was on the dais with you? That seems a bit unfair. And then to call them out and say, well, you're not going to tell us what we're getting, we're not going to help you. No, we didn't do that. Just go ahead and add that money in. If you didn't cause the budget, if you just handed it, then who did? Who do you think agreed to the budgets, the bonds, the approvals for changes, increases, change orders, everything that has been voted on that goes into the money that is spent? That was y'all. The discussion made it very clear, you didn't even look at the budget or the CIPs, or at least the mayor didn't. Budget motions were to reduce the city council's training of travel by 100,000 and bring us a budget reflecting a 72 cent rate and put that money into salaries and public safety, meaning first responders, not a second assistant city manager. Mr. Cagle thinks we can afford that recurring cost. Who said to take money out of interest revenue? We can afford all that now, why weren't we starting with it? The added 1% is not coming out of an increased tax rate, it is coming from the interest revenue, according to what the city manager just stated. There were no stipulations on year-end funds for IBCC or the mental health co-responder. The year-end funding was directed at KEDC and Children's Advocacy Center. If available, go back and read your minutes, they're in your packet tonight. We had smaller valuation increases and more construction, which we rely on when we lowered the tax rate. We also used sales tax toward property tax relief. We won't go to the VAR because it would eliminate our ability to use the increment rate in the future. And spend less on lawsuits you know we will lose, and don't pay the Supreme Court rates. Finally, remember, you are not a silo.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, madam. Our constituent mentioned blessings on the block and other mobile pantries. I just want to be, go on the record and say that they were actually one of the organizations that was extremely excited about the co-op opportunity. He's been at every meeting, and so he's part of that conversation as well as many other community partners. So again, I just want to put it out there, thank you to all the community partners. We didn't name everyone, but we're very thankful. But thank you for that recommendation, he's been a part of those conversations.
Thank you, and I just want to clarify something, too. When I say the most cost-effective, and I also stated, we may not have a grocery store. Not just, it may work or it may not work, I just didn't say that. So the person comment, I don't know what they're going to offer, I want to clarify that. Second of all, the increase in tax rate, I don't know if, maybe I didn't make it clear, it is for our first responders and compensation for our employees. Infrastructure and what, all the other things that was said, I don't even know where that came from. So it was clear from this council, motion of direction, our first responders, those are the ones that provide services for all of us. And also our employees. I think Mr. Cagle did an excellent job with, we have a high turnover rate. And it was clear, if that turnover rate continued, our police officers, our firefighters, our jailers, they have to be retrained. And that training is not one week or two weeks or three weeks. So we're losing people to other cities around us because of compensation. So that is all we asked for. It was not about infrastructure, it's not about zoning. I don't even know where that came from, like I stated earlier. It's about the first responders that protect this city and the compensation. Because if you have a job, if you work, you get a pay raise on any job, especially in the military, a federal job, we always go to the next step. I don't understand why you want less for the employees of the city of Colleen. With that being said, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
The order? I apologize, I had to speak to a resident about an issue. All right, with that being said, Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
MN-25018, MN-25019, MN-25020, RS-25123, RS-25125, RS-25126.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mayor Proton?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Councilman Solomon?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No? Let the record show that Councilmember Alvarez and Councilwoman Gonzalez is still on break. Motion carries four to zero. Discussion item. Madam Secretary.
DS-25042, discuss and consider changes to proposed fiscal year 2026 operating and CIP budget.
Mr. Cagle?
Yes, ma'am. Our recommendation was for a motion of direction to approve the staff recommendations that were presented, so either that or make some changes or modifications to those or reject them all. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, but that also would come with our resolution, correct?
Oh, this will come back to you when we approve the budget. This is just a motion of direction to make those, put those changes into the budget.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Solomon? Motion of direction?
Yes, make a motion of direction, Madam Mayor, to assist, to?
The changes, proposed fiscal year 2026 operating and CIP budget.
Is that along with the tax rate?
No, sir, that'll be next.
Could you show him on yours, so he can get the motion? Of direction?
I make a motion that we, a motion of direction to change to the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating CIP budget, according to staff recommendations.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Segarra?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No? Thank you both. Okay, now, we need someone? We got four? Okay, could you please raise your hand? Oh, there you go. Motion carries four to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
RS-25127, consider a memorandum resolution setting the preliminary property tax rate for the fiscal year 2026 annual budget and setting the date to hold a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Cagle, I need counsel for this resolution, I need a motion to consider a memorandum resolut, resolution setting the preliminary property tax rate for the fiscal year 2026 annual budget and setting the date to hold a public hearing. Mr. Councilmember Solomon?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to set the preliminary tax rate at 7014 cents and to set the date of September 2nd, 2025, for the public hearing on the tax rate to be held at 3:00 PM at 101 North College Street, Colleen, Texas.
Madam City Secretary, Councilwoman Gonzalez is not here, but we need to take a record vote.
Yes, ma'am. We need a second first.
Councilman Segarra? Yes, sir, I can't see. Oh, Councilwoman Cobb?
I, I second that motion.
Okay. Now we're ready, Madam Secretary, thank you for pointing that out to me.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Alvarez? Councilmember Cobb? Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Segarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
That is a yes.
Okay. The motion carries unanimously six to zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now we'll go into public hearing. PH-25-041, council, Mrs. Messer has gone through the slides, would you like for her to go back through the slides? Set a no? Shaking heads? No? Yes? Okay. All right. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? Please state your name.
Yes, ma'am, City Manager and Council, my name is Michelle Lee with Central Texas Land Development Services. We're at 2901 East Anschluter Loop, and I'm here to ask for your approval on this rezon and answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much. There are no questions. All right, we will now hold a public hearing. Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
These are not SR1s when you put in a five-foot side yard setback, five-foot side yard setback, that's what I want to say. There is no current existing drainage infrastructure in this area. And where is the actual putt agreement to be seen, where we can see what the developer is actually going to do in regard to the utilities as far as putting in drainage, as far as that infrastructure? Because if they don't, we have to pay for it, and that's how it comes out of our taxes. And that's how it affects our budget, and that's why they're all connected. While I appreciate that these are larger lots, these houses will still be closer together than the mayor and her staff, and Mr. Brown said has been so helpful to them. Ask yourself if this is actually a sustainable change. The statement that utilities are available here is the equivalent of saying that we made $13,500 off of selling Linda Lane. Well, technically, it's true. We actually only made $6,151 after we got rid of all of the liens and waived all of those because that's money we're not going to collect. In this case, yes, there may be water, and there may be wastewater, and half of it is actually through West Bell County water supply, it's not through anything that we have. But the drainage does not exist there. So it doesn't have full utilities, it doesn't have all of the infrastructure necessary. You do have to keep into consideration the traffic. While a TIA is required, that doesn't mean that they're going to do any work to improve the street right then and there. There's still going to be children walking to school through that area, there's still going to be vehicles. School starts in about a week. There is zero probability that Chaparral will be improved prior to these houses being built and certificate of occupancy being issued. Zero probability. This isn't like they will more than likely on Featherline. We know, because these, the earliest we can expect Chaparral to start is 2029 now, the earliest. So is this something sustainable? Is this something that is good for the community? Is this beneficial to us? Is this going to bring us the revenue that we need from new construction? Because based on every presentation that we've been given, it is not. So maybe think about those things.
Mr. Gary Purser, you have three minutes.
Council, Mayor, I want to talk about zoning. I see two zoning cases on tonight, and staff comes up and talks to y'all and recommends approval, and they talk about meeting the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. That's all they talked about. And they recommend approval. I stood before y'all two weeks ago, and I had a piece of property, I didn't own it, that met the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, it met the Future Land Use Plan, and it also was a primary use. It has to do with zoning.
Sir, I'm looking at legal, and they're shaking their head, so it has to be the item that's on the agenda?
It's zoning, ma'am, is it not?
Madam City Attorney?
It's a specific zoning case, so comments need to be related to this zoning case.
Okay, it's zoning. Let's talk about how they can come up here and tell you it meets the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and I'm assuming it's going to pass, and I'm not opposed to it, I think it needs to pass. Let's talk about that. So one meets it, one doesn't. Where we make a decision? And then, does anybody do their homework? Did we look at why we turned it down? Three times? Four times? Did you look back and see if it met it then? Did anybody do any research? I don't know. Anyway, it's disgusting, because it meets the same criteria. And it ain't right. It ain't right at all. So I'll leave it at that. But it needs to be thought about.
Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove PH-25-041? Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I move to approve PH-25041 as presented. I did want to say that this, this motion is based on staff's recommendation. I know the gentleman made a statement about that. Sir, I'm not a, I'm not a professional planner by trade. I leave that up to the professionals in the room. I don't believe you're a planner either, unless you have AICP.
Mr. Alvarez, focus on the agenda item, not at Mr. Purser. Mr. Purser, Mr. Purser. You have spoken already. And I would have, Mr. Purser, I would really appreciate if you would be so kindly to take your seat. I just corrected him, he had no right to direct that to you. You were on your way out the door, and then when he said that, no, sir, this is not school, put your hand down, you were on your way out the door, Mr. Purser. And I'm sorry he did that, Mr. Purser, but please, Mr. Purser, we've been down this road, please. Respect, respect me, sir. Sir, you know you were wrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Purser, I'd apologize to you for saying your name specifically. I will say that I am not a professional. I will say that I am not a professional planner by trade, so I defer to the experts in the room, and I would hope that everyone else would respect everyone's specific professions. You know, regarding to staff, I hear the comments all the time that disregard staff's expertise. You know, these folks have worked hard in their professions and in their specific disciplines, and I believe that they deserve their respect in their professions as anyone else would. So with that, again, my motion is to approve PH-25-041 based on staff recommendation.
Councilmember Segarra?
Second.
All in favor? Yes. All opposed? No. Motion carries six to zero. And once again, Mr. Purser, I apologize, that should have never happened. Madam Secretary?
Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Marion Benjamin Bell, case number Z2519, to rezone approximately 1.987 acres, being lot 1A, block 1, out of the Robinson addition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 1914 North 10th Street, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. Oh. Oh, sorry, I got excited.
It's okay. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning approximately 1.987 acres, being lot 1A, block 1, out of the Robinson addition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And once again, I apologize. Council staff has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go, Mrs. Mesher? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, would you like to speak?
No, I really may.
Yes, sir. Will you please state your name for the record?
Yes, Marion Benjamin Bell.
Yes, sir, and the micro, because they're in court.
Marion Benjamin Bell, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
First time.
That's okay, that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, I purchased the property, and it was in a Bravo 5. I've been in that area since 1997, so I purchased it, and I just want to build a home or something on it, make it usable.
Yes, sir. Okay. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
Let me start it off in the words that you all hear. Okay, now I'll translate for everybody watching at home. Based on the Flume and the surrounding area, it does seem that this is a better fit for R1 than B5. You know, if I believe there is a parallel between this and a former request that had come up on a different agenda to discuss B1 zoning in this same area, and as long as I believe it's connected and proves a point, then it's still on agenda for me to talk about it. I can talk about the fact that a B1 was requested in that same vicinity before, and it was denied even though it was already a base B5. It was. But a bar doesn't make sense there because it's mostly residential. In this particular situation, it's mostly residential around there, and I want to take it from a B5 commercial to a residential. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. If I think it should be denied or approved because of a similar item before, and that I believe someone is being treated differently even though it parallels, I can discuss that as long as I believe that the two are connected. I believe that this is connected to other prior zonings that have come up. I believe that even though this is his first time here, he is being treated with a lot more dignity, like someone else was just treated with a whole heck of a lot more dignity even though someone on the dais was off the agenda, and when it had to go ahead and tell everybody, called him out, and...
Mayor, you can make that call of whether she's on the agenda or not, of how closely, I mean, this is a specific zoning case that we're talking about, and I don't think she's talked about the zoning case at all yet, but that's up to you, Mayor.
I started out, I said, based on the Flume and surrounding area, it does seem this is a better fit than B5. So I did talk about it. Thanks. So again, I did actually talk about it, saying, based on the Flume and surrounding area, it does seem to be a better fit than B5 to make this an R1. If you listened when I started the translation, then you would have heard me say that. Yeah. That's why I started it out in the words that you hear. Yeah. Regardless, I believe that this individual requesting this is being treated similarly to other people who have requested to have R1s put in, in the infill district, in the infill area, which is why I think that this is something that should be approved, because you do that for other people coming in to ask for infill and residential in that area. So maybe listen, maybe pay attention, maybe let us have our own minds, and as long as I think I'm on the agenda, I'm on the agenda. You're not the queen.
Council, Mayor Protophe.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve PH-25-042.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I second that motion.
All in favor? Yes. All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, Government Code 55.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the fifth day of August 2025 at 5:51 p.m. under the following authority. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. The city council will consult with legal counsel regarding the city's legal rights concerning Bell County Municipal District Number Two Consent and Development Agreement. Agenda item DS-25-043. We are now going to council into closed meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move to re-adjourn.
Councilmember Adams? I mean, Solomon?
Second.
All in favor? Yes. All opposed? No.
Yes.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Good job.